And then call the board. You don't have a chance for a few minutes.
Yes, please. I think the question should be seven minutes. It says, good.
Say it. The discussion on it, all papers, your posts. Miss your shields. Careful these on topic.
Okay. Appreciate the information you presented to the chairman of the county. The county commission regarding the ordinance with cell towers. And I believe it was turned over to our councilor and all your jobs to find a team to equip and construct places. And I looked at it, I got it yesterday, I believe. And when I looked at it, I saw some mistakes still in that that I'd already talked about. And I thought I had to bring it before this group before express that to him. And so, my understanding that's, I don't do that, that I didn't go directly to him and point out, there's some misspelled words that had in there, it's still in there. And so, I'll do my job, I'll get that to him. So, we can have this approved the next time instead of that.
Okay.
And I thought I'd come back through here and show you some concerns I had before I spelled lines.
Yeah, I think that's more stuff that Mr. Jones needs to get me out.
Yeah, when I got the email, I really thought it was from Jack. You and Jack, I thought you were Jack. So, I'll get that back to you. I'll just work out, done, we get that out, get that out of here, don't have to bug it this.
Any comments on the tasks that you gave us in the last board meeting that we've been officially here, but just no comment? That's what we got.
I think what we have to learn is to kind of clarify the case in the county, in the commissioner, what the next step was. Because I read quite a bit in the media that we're removing, this community was removed in the broadband arena. And after I looked at, and some of y'all, some of y'all have taken time to educate me, where things are ahead. I think this has to have a view. I'm not sure the planning board has time to give, to actually develop a model for broadband for either our communities or our county as a whole. I still think we have, I don't have the expertise. So, I think the county has to go back and take a recommitment if this is what we want to do. But I'm not sure the planning board is the arena that this should come out of. Carl, did I say that halfway right? I just feel like we need to start talking about broadband, high-speed internet, those type of things. We had a good conversation about cell towers. When you move into this broadband, high-speed internet, that's another conversation. And I'm just not sure that the planning board has the manpower and expertise to do forward with this.
I agree with you. I think that there's no question that lack of broadband in Lake County is a serious issue and it deserves appropriate attention. I don't think it's a fair expectation to think that the planning board, for over twelve seasoned individuals in that field, could sit down an hour a month and ever arrive at a plan. So, I think, I, I, I.
It needs to come back to the, it needs to come back to us. And, and I don't know why it comes back to us. That's the recommendation you had to do.
Yeah, well, maybe when we get in on the whole business, we'll talk about the last meeting and talk about how economic development is all part of it. And maybe out of that conversation, we can figure out where to go here as a board on our recommendations and accomplishments.
Yeah, I think there's, we're looking for a model, the expertise that it takes to put that model together. Your shield doesn't have it. And I think you have to find that person, a person who's been focused and concentrated, not one hour a month, it's got to be. So, that'd be my answer to the other commission.
Thanks. Any other comment back there from the media? Okay, so, last month, we brought telecommunications ordinance to the public. And kind of, last minute, there was a couple changes that we had to make based on some statute or regulations. Jack, just cut me off if I say something wrong.
You can do it.
Does everyone have a copy of that?
I'm not reading them, but they're black through.
This is more a content change than it is a practical change. Well, it is a content change.
Why are you looking at me?
I'm just looking around the room, I wasn't looking back.
Did you just say what or did you mean the content? It is a content check, not a picture check.
Okay, on page nine, section 15408B. Two up from the bottom on my page. It originally read that if the structure does not start within 24 months from the date of issuance, the wireless support structure building permit shall expire. The state statute requires building permits expire after six months. So, we had to strike the 24 and replace the six. A little bit of speculation on my part, I think when we put that in the ordinance, the intent was that applicant had 24 months in order to construct the tower. And the application wasn't good indefinitely. And so, in order to stay with that intent, we had to rewrite section 15409, which is on page 10. And I don't recall how it read before, but it now reads, "Applications for new wireless support structures for substantial modifications to wireless support structures shall be approved or denied by the Lake County Board Commissioner. Required quasi judicial public hearing to be held for Lake County Board here before any decision is made to approve or deny an application." It pretty much stopped right there before. And so, the application was good indefinitely at that point, not just for 24 months. So, we added the text that the county board of commissioners approves the application for the purpose, such approval and permit shall require the facilities to be constructed within at least 24 months. So, I think that language was to keep in with our intent of, you had, once you got approval of the board, you have 24 months to construct the tower, to begin construction of the tower. So, are there any comments on that content change? Any approval or disapproval?
I have some questions in the R or M.
The R?
The R.
Okay.
On the first page, down there under title, ordinance with your guys, 12301, and 08's been struck and 09's been added, bank one, and then 13 and a sixth thing. How, what does that say?
It may have been originally on the calendar for eight, nine, the 2016, or August 9th, 2016. And that was been, because it was, that was last week. And so, it's been struck since September 13th, 2016, which is the next board commission.
I just get all those straps that happened and all this. And I want to ask a question just about this. I know that there is a bond or liability insurance is required by the owner of the tower to, you have to post any evidence, tell me about that fact.
This is an, are we different?
We have.
That's what I need to know. And I don't have to have any bond or anything, which is what?
In this one, it, I'm going to be written, then they land under the tower. They have to sign a agreement, whatever they agree.
Yeah, it was a contract between the tower and the land that we see, the land, that was upon place, or there wasn't any of that on.
The board took a position that the county shouldn't be involved in contractual negotiation between a commoner and a property owner and pushing it up a tower. That that, that they shouldn't be mandated, what, how that is, that contract should be derived from. And, and, you know, and I'm going from memory, but we talked about all these things like, what is the tower, plus that property owner fell on the neighbor, and, you know, should account, well, why is, why is that matter to the county? You know, that, that should be something that is required between the tower owner and the property owner.
So, the county doesn't require it? So, that's wrong according to us.
What was the discussion we had about the height of the ridge, forward or?
At the board commissioners meeting?
Yes.
The discussion there was as it relates to a protected ridge line.
Right, right.
And the ridge law, which says the structure can't be 40 feet above the top of the ridge, and how that relates to the ordinance where it says the structure can't extend 40 feet above the canopy. And the canopy is defined as the top of the trees.
Top of the tree. Because we asked this guy, if we don't know that was the bottom, that's the top of the trees.
So, I think that, and I think that language is out of the original ordinance. And it's keeping, it's keeping within the intent of the ridge law that a structure doesn't stick more than 40 feet visibly above that ridge.
I want to.
Sure.
I know you were going to kick me off.
No, no, I'm not.
On page 11, number two, notice to adjacent or running property owners. Is there any, that's pretty wide open, I mean, is there any distance? If you're an adjacent owner, but it's a mile before you, you know, there's a mile property between the property line, to the property lines, what's the distance? Where, where, when do you, when do you have to do that? When you?
It's just the adjacent property owners. And part of the discussion there was, you may have a tower on one side of the mountain, and your burden with notifying 200 people that are on the other side of the mountain that will never see the tower anyway.
That's my question.
So, and I think that's how that conversation progressed to get to where it did, if I recall that correctly. Unless somebody else recalls that differently.
Let me say I'm wrong. All of the corrections has been corrected. I put my dice in it, you can see a little mark. So, all the corrections are missed out. And I was just concerned about, have been corrected. And I'm sure we'll do the final thing, because I see those little lines in there.
If you don't, if you didn't signature shield, I'll give you a copy of this with the red line through, and also send you a copy of this as it will be corrected without the strike through show. The strike throughs in the red is just to show you what's been changed.
That's what I received, don't mind.
I assumed it was one that could be presented to the commission, when you say it, that's what I'm saying.
Appreciate it.
So, with the, I'm not concerned, my question isn't in regards to misspelling, but more along the line of the three more in the block, 15409, just plan to make the amendments again.
Jack, you haven't answered that question?
I think this is additional for consensus that it's not a lot of time during the term. The planning board did approve it anyway, which is a change. Change is a little bit of a worry, but in my opinion, not really the challenge in term of the, of the year. So, that's the reason, thank you, just notification, notification of the defense obligations. Do you think there are changes in the future?
Okay, we had a lot of conversation on the notification. And we do notify via posting on the site, we have to advertise it. I think it has to be radio ad, it has to be newspaper ad. And so, while the tower company is not charged with notifying people that'll never see the tower, the information is still out there to the public, that there just will be a tower constructed. So, any other comments on that? You have a consensus to say something 10?
Yes.
Okay, so, last month, we spent two hours learning more about broadband than I thought I would now. And I think a lot of discussions, how it relates to economic development. Mr. Jenkins sort of got it, as well as the two, three other people we had here. So, I guess, just kind of, question for Adam, when you deal with people looking for property every, every day, is that a big question? Is that a big question?
I was telling Betty there, she was asking me about a piece of property that was right above her house. And right there, the five came on. And they're actually internet built. And that's what, 28. And we'd love to have it, but can't get internet, because the whole PSK, if you're on the right side of the office. And that's what Betty can't get, where she's at, but they're two miles past that. And that basically probably won't translate to a sale, where if it wasn't, basically, it wouldn't be. It has to pull down, basically, it's going to be.
So, that's one of those examples, I guess, where the fiber hits the box, and he's on the right side of the fiber. Would that be?
He's, he's going to get, to get sale, because it's on the right way, before you do that, the moment, it's a fast business.
Well, my question is, the way all of this started was just, we had gone to the commission meeting for something else, and one member of the commissioners just said, what I'd like the planning board to do, I think it was word is, provide us with a map or something like that. You were there, Chris. So, I think it's really understandable that a planning board can't get into the details of broadband development in the county. And on the other hand, we want to make sure we fulfilled what we were charged to do by the commissioners originally. And I can see that if it continued, that they might. I absolutely have no expertise in this, but you could make as a planning board some recommendations in terms of search for ground. I don't know who does that, the committee. You know, about the only way to determine who really has broadband or access and who doesn't is a survey, that, you know, you could give some broad recommendations. But I agree that the details are beyond me. But I think, I mean, it's what I'm trying to say, as long as we've done what they originally asked us to do, then I guess we're set free, right? Is that what we're saying?
Well, I think after that, we had presented that to the board commissioners in February, I believe it was 16, just as the planning board presented it to the board commissioners. And at that time, I think it was Commissioner Portman.
Was it just Ronnie Deal, I couldn't remember?
Specifically asked for the cell phone maps and the internet maps.
Right.
So, we, as a board met, we had attached map at the time, when producing those maps, which he did, the best that he could give answers to. And since then, Jack is trying to find out which providers are on cell phone towers, with, to no avail. We reached out to other providers besides also must ENET to try to find out if there was more fiber in the ground than what we knew of, and we got no response from any of the providers. So, as the map sits today and have all the information on it that we're aware of, that we were tasked to do in federal.
Okay, and then so, we just stop here? Is there anything to do?
Well, I think what, what happened at the last board commissioners meeting is, the question was asked by Commissioner Shields, is now an appropriate time to ask the planning board to figure out, we have the maps, now what we do with the maps?
Oh, okay.
And there's been a lot of discussion in the community, in particular, in communities in general, not, not on a county level, of how can they get a system set up? And Cartu B J is a great example. And so, that's kind of a micro management kind of a level. And I think that's more of a community type effort than it is a county type effort. So, I think as a planning board, we need to look at what can we, what recommendations can we make to the board commissioners as the board. If the recommendation is to have consultants get involved at the county level, or to have staff members get involved on the county level, is broadband really necessary in Lake County? I think the answer is yes, but I mean, that's my opinion. I think we need to determine how important that is. And I think that all the discussions we've had with economic development, the importance of, you know, the county board, is, is it's important?
Obviously, there is a situation there. There is. They had to have, they had to have, they had to have, I bet it's housing, you know.
Well, that's the answer to my question. I just wanted to be sure, is your expertise on what the board wants to do, and we, we stop there?
Yeah, I think, I think you're right, I think there are a couple of times. This is over by it. You need to hand it back to them, say this next time.
Another few points, it's, it's, we still have time to do this. This would be a big job.
All right, so, I see, I see it being a consulting firm, it works on it for probably a solid year before they come up with a good solid plan to put in place to put for off grounds about Lake County. I don't think there's no way possible, we can sit here and do that as a board, and Carl's the only one who's got any knowledge of anything in here, and you look, Carl's the one that did it.
But I think that's where you hand it back to the commissioners. That that's, that's, okay, this is our recommendation. Take this, go forward, because this is where we are.
I agree with you, Mr. Chairman, that the board needs to consider, by way of what they learned in the discussions we had at their last meeting, and by the maps, is there an issue in our county? Is it important enough for the county to decide about it? And if the planning board thinks it feels that it is that important, that's the recommendation of the commissioners, or what you can say. If you're advised, the commissioners, probably you go forward with this.
Justin?
Well, I think, I think I'd like some corporate recommendations, to hire a firm or have third party proof or something that can truly, you know, figure out what we need to help do it, but not physically, you know, hire this company, doesn't have a lot of fiber everywhere, but this is what we have to get what we think you need for future growth in Lake County.
It's like we were talking to her, if you're going to build a house, you get your architect. That architect, work with people who designed the house if you want. And that's kind of what we're saying here, is you use a certain fire quality, it may be, you need somebody to design it.
I think it needs to be referenced maybe in the economic section of the comp plan, that, you know, with all the faith is needed, with more broadband, some, some sort of an economic section. So, if, you know, some big grants come along, then we've got stated somewhere that this county already said they need this, and here it is, and they got it. And that always, a lot of these grants, look at that, this is the plan.
There's not a section of that comp plan, broadband, so.
I don't know, it's really, it could be for everything.
You start.
I mean, it's.
I'm basically playing about the, I don't know.
It could be in schools, it could be in recreation, it could be agriculture, I mean, it could be, I mean, it could be in every single section, but economics kind of overlays all of it, really.
But some of it is a lot, a lot, and some of it, so, education.
Education is huge now. I mean, every, they don't have, they don't have no books no more. End of hot ass.
Swift, dude. There's a big conversation.
That's my question.
What did you say?
I see the broadband problem in Lake County needs to be had in some section of the comp plan. I think that the planning board shouldn't wait to be finished with the comp plan, bring it to the things for the mission. But I mean, I don't think that idea, consider that it has some section there. I do know this, your last question, if you don't have it in the plan, the states aren't going to be able to.
And that may be part of the recommendation, is it, for this to be included in the complex plan, along with the consultant or what it may be.
Yeah, I don't know if as a board, if we want to leave it on our plate that long. I think if we included it in a section of the comp plan, and gave it its own section to show that's how important it is to the planning board. But in the meantime, you know, that's something that happens six months from now. In the meantime, to get it off of our plates, we go ahead to the board commissioners, whatever recommendation.
Two recommendations, one of the maps, and then, and then six months now, we wish the comp plan is in there as well.
Did you have any thoughts?
No, I don't know. Could we agree?
Anything else?
I'm going to report our very worst interest to the public, and that's the problem, it's a potential, I think, there's a situation, considering it is.
Carl, you have more thoughts?
So, the recommendation, the motion that this county has the planning board is a recommendation that the planning board recommends two things. One, that there should be a section of the comp plan, deal directly with broadband in Lake County. And two, that the planning board feels like that broadband in Lake County is important enough that the county, that the county commissioners look into or move forward with developing, get somebody developing that, and so.
Part of my.
I don't know if we need a motion to add it to the comp plan, because I think that's a document and process of being constructed, that at some point we'll get a motion when it's finalized by the planning board. But I think.
We can add that to the comp plan, that will work.
I think so.
So, we only have one, the motion that should be, just for the one out.
I'll read it out. I'll read it out.
Now, when you make that motion to the board, does that stop there? Do you have a second? What is my role right there now? Do I need to?
Well, we will come to the next commissioners meeting and discuss how important it is to, to the county that we pursue broadband in Macon County.
Do we, in turn, turn that into a motion? Your recommendation?
At the board commissioners level, or at the main board?
When you come there and you present, let's say, the, the plan of war's recommendation of being lengthened to, or a consultant firm, does someone on, on the commission need to hear that and make that into a motion?
I think the county, I think the plan of war needs to say that this is important enough that the county commissioners do something else with it. I don't, I don't think, I don't know that it's appropriate. I think that the, that the county commissioners need to figure out how they want to do it, okay? Because, A, my first put is, is the county commissioners need to pass, the county manager will figure out who within county government is going to look after that, and then, then if, you know, the recommendation from that person may be to pay out, I don't have that expertise for that. The plan of war, the, the plan of war feels like that they don't have that expertise for, other counties have reached out to outside consultants, I mean, that's information that they can put together. I don't know that, you know, that that can be a decision that the county commissioners can make, but, I think from what the county, that county commissioners ask the plan of war to do, you know, yeah, we, it's, it's, I think it's a very important priority, it needs attention, and we are going to add a section to the comp plan, so we can address it, specifically with the broadband, you know, with the county commissioners, they can move forward, looking at the ways to, to better our policy.
Then we just say thank you.
Thank you.
There's your plan of war.
Right.
We're excited. How are you? Do you have any motion for this?
I think if the, uh, the plan of war needs to be important enough, I think we can motion.
Say again.
I think if the plan of war needs to be important enough, I think we can motion.
Say again.
Mark Ford, would you take it? There's maybe taking there. If they think, if the commissioner thinks, you can, or please them, you know, raise for proposals to firms, so they put it out, and then they get people that represent what they can do, and they decide.
I think, I think that the person that's spearheading it needs to make those, that's not the same. I don't think that, I don't think that that should be a recommendation for plan of war, certainly I think the plan of war should be involved in that.
No, I, I, I was in the thing, we should be able to do it, that should be just the discussions they know that's, that ownership is not just.
There, there might be the possibility that there could be strong enough feelings at the county commissioners level that, that they realize the significance of this, and it might be a priority to them where they don't want to go through that consulting process. They might want to reach out and hire someone, um, that is currently serving as a consultant type position somewhere, and bring that person on board to get this process moving forward. So, I think, I think the, this should might be, I would, I would open, both of them, so to give them the flexibility of just have, you know, how important is this, how important we want to move on it, because there's, there's, there's more and more people about it, and all of them take their own amount of money, you know, so it's just going to depend on the resources that they want. Because that person might even be, um, I suspect the likelihood that person might be the top person that would be a part of the county IT department. So, so that, that might be an option that the commissioners want to explore. And then that person may hire a consultant on IAS and bases for particular pieces that has, that he's put together, and then, or he or she in the name of the plan.
I think it would potentially, we could lead a proposal or something. But I think it's too early for us to say you can propose, but I want to have a conversation.
And I guess, Dr. Rob, I understand, my thought when you said proposal, my thought was proposal for design, not proposal for structure.
Yeah, design, a little plan, it's a hire somebody to come in, you send out a proposal, and firms, whoever comes in and says, oh, we think you should do this, and I'll do, this be, and this, and I'll survey everything, and so on. Not to, physically, you know, then you get into, you know, constructions, three, three or four that's down.
Should the language include the word feasibility study? Or is, or is that?
Are we determined that the feasibility, this letter, to have broadband access to the county? Does you need more, you know?
And I think, you know, if the plan of war passes the motion to say it, that they see the need, I think.
Please be able to talk to him about it. If you run into a force.
Might need a reality study.
Well, that's. If you're lying about that, then that's true. You know?
But I don't mean it was bringing up what other counties do, but, at all, but I'm
sort of fascinated back in the summer with Haywood County, and they, it was their economic development team that, that, that went after the grants, that went after, they got the money from Southwest Commission. I mean, we could, you could, I don't know how much you tell the commissioner, but you might make a suggestion, if they're stymied, don't worry, go, whether to their IT department or something else, that other counties have used the Economic Development Council to to work on. I don't know, maybe that's too much detail in what we're trying to say to them, but that's an approach that some other counties have used, given it to another entity, past it all, so, I don't know. Maybe just a broad, general motion like we're talking about makes sense.
I think it does, and I'm, I'm, well, we're not thinking pretty detailed, but I think in this case, if you get, if you get too much to the point, you're going to, you're going to create some roadblocks, because it, I think it's going to be, because of the infrastructure that we have, and the way that you eventually go after funding and have to have, make sure for that, and the way that you're going to have to operate in order to get vendors to participate, I think it's going to be, it's going, so much of how we can be able to take that inside the box, and, and we're not going to be able, it wouldn't be who, but a lot of restrictions on, by how you go about it, because it's, it's going to be hard to do.
And expensive.
At that.
You're going to have to, I think we're time to.
I would, I would scratch through most of what I've read now.
Do you want to start this again? I think the motion could, could potentially have something, as soon as the, the plan of war, uh, has determined that there is a, a significant and substantial need for broadband, or, or a shortfall of broadband, I don't know, hey, or stated, uh, in Macon County, and they've realized that, that it, we're bringing a substantial undertaking to the board, broadband throughout Macon County, but that it is, you know, a critical issue, at least, that needs to have a potential motion.
This is what I scratched down on, I want to make a stand for it. This is Macon County Plan and Board makes the recommendation that the lack of broadband internet service should be looked into to provide broadband service to the majority of Macon County residents. So, very broad, definitely, we're not really saying, hire a consulting group, don't hire, don't hire, you know, individuals as a county employee, you know, basically leaders go broad, let them handle how they want to handle it, or we're not really, Thomas Strange is not.
Read that one more time.
I can read mine out the second time. Uh, Macon County Plan and Board make their recommendation that the lack of broadband, broadband internet service should be looked into to provide broadband to the majority of Macon County residents.
Do you say some word on why, I don't, I think that pass right back to.
Can I throw something out there? The plan of war believes.
You can't read it. It's not recorded. I'll read it back to you.
The plan of war believes broadband service is a necessity, and the county should pursue enhancing broadband access through county resources outside of the plan. For some version.
County or private, maybe, I don't know, if you're going to, if you're going to say county.
When I say county resources, I just was.
Make, uh, money. Money, yeah.
Well, and I think that's right, it needs to come back to us, the commissioners, and we need to take it and say what.
The plan of war believes broadband access is a shortfall, the county should.
I called it, you know, when you said that the, the plan of war gets determined, where this is made, it's a chance to make it back in county. That's what you said.
Yes, that's what you wrote.
I mean, some of the symptoms of that, that there is a need, that's what y'all, in turn, I believe, that it needs, the recommendation is that, that it's, it needs some serious attention, that the county will, that the county will proceed with the county.
It's, it's, we, uh, they retain the knowledge and direction they need to pursue. So, Dr. Rob, jot that down.
Some of.
We agree with you.
So, I mean, we agree on that and make a motion, whoever's there that not to tell them can unpack that any way they want. I mean, they don't have to disagree that what we fit in, I mean, we're all on the same.
I just think for the, for the record and for the minutes, we need to clear a motion right into the side. To our team.
And also, at the same time, your knowledge, and there's a lead, because Ryan writes about this, there, there's people out there that will tell you, I mean, there's a big need for it. And, and I mean, the county commissioners, we can make sure we understand that there's a big need for it.
Is that any country to public comment, asking, talking about it?
They, they're, they're the last, they, people without last time presented concerns and stuff, and that's where I got confused on cell towers and what's in the ground, what's in there and stuff, but, uh, but I think it's, that's a good thing, I mean, I think people come and voice, and that's where you learn about the concern to the community.
Did somebody else raise your hand, Ryan?
No.
Well, that was a black man. Good, that's been a drink a little bit, I didn't say a horrible phrase. You won't be getting lunch tomorrow.
My word has determined, specifically, that the Macon County Board broadband service realizes a substantial undertaking that would be involved, and the county commissioners proceed with the means and methods to provide broadband service for all of Macon County residents as possible, is what I call.
Sure, switch to the form.
And that's, that's good. Thank you. Our plan of war is determined, there is a significant, a substantial need in Macon County for broadband service, and realizes a substantial undertaking is involved, recommend that the county commissioners proceed with the means and means to provide broadband service for all of Macon County citizens as possible.
Change the second substantial to another word, so you don't have the same word in the plot.
All right, give the word.
Uh, we need to look up at the seminale, to say. What do you think, Dr.?
I didn't study any.
It's just a word play.
The sentence again, where you got a substantial quality, figure it out, have determined a substantial, substantial need, and then, you know, the plan of war realizes a substantial need.
Just take, just take that first one out, and so benefit.
All right. So the substantial need.
That's high priority. Significant need or significant deficit?
Significant need in Macon County.
Which could be, significant, there's a significant need, or we have a significant deficit.
All right, that might care, that might carry a little.
Well, is there a significant need for the last mile?
The reason, what's kind of driving my thought on that is, there's the numbers that you say going around in France, where we have seventy-three percent coverage of internet, but when we start looking at the state, we'll, you know, we certainly don't have that, so, but we have to, we have a significant need or significant deficit.
I think you could say that currently, Macon County has a significant deficit and, and, and a dire need.
Yeah, you said about last mile, I think it's, I think it's accurate to say that we don't, we don't lead just to the last mile, we still lead to the middle mile, and the last mile. We don't even go middle mile. I think that, I mean, I think that's accurate.
Do you think that thing's very in the mode?
No, I'm just, I mean.
I mean, it's very in the discussed discussion.
It's in a discussion, and it's, it decides that it's not last mile, middle and last mile.
That's good, if you want. When you make your presentation today, I treat you a quote.
The commissioners might think last mile, like, oh, where's that, you know, telico, and then a halo, and pissy.
I guess when I say the last mile, I think the middle mile is also last for some of the fiber that's running through the county. I think the last mile, I think the last mile again, from, basically, the, the entrant being the provider, the provider that provides it to us, I think, is the last mile. And then you're, you're off.
Well, there's, 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 there's no, when you look down, when you look through Dallas Springs, there's no middle line. When you look through October, there's no middle line. When you look through.
Chat.
Cartujay, there's no middle line. So, so there's, there's, there's.
Boston West has got a, a line to the middle, give it a middle mile to, you know, a third potentially, but, you should have two-thirds, it doesn't happen in a lot.
Where we change it for some.
Yeah, we did, when we stepped out the substantial need, and we were trying to determine whether it is a need or we have a significant deficit, or we have a lack of access.
these need or we had a significant deficit or we had a lack of access.
Thank you. I think what he's got is kind of just a discussion because of the last.
The motion.
Did? I thought it was your.
It's a, it's a debate. In the second?
Second.
Another fall over it. Any more discussion on it? All right, all favor?
I think there's somebody who hopes, if we please, the board put out there that's our focus out, and I'd take the one to make sure that that is in the next one. I said what you heard. That's sort of true.
Okay, now it's finally, so six months down the road, what's happened now from our perspective? We talked about six months on the comprehensive.
Well, hopefully we've gone through the comprehensive plan and we're ready to present that to the board commissioners.
And are we saying now at this point, we'll add a section on broadband access?
I think between now and then, we'll add a section of broadband access.
And we don't have the ability, and I'm, and I mean that seriously, to really make a recommendation to the commissioners about what to do, so who's good or right with that
I think we as a board need to discuss it, right? We help work, start caring. The, the need, the need for broadband, the usefulness of broadband. How does affect the other areas?
Aspects of.
It's not, it's from, from a comp plan is, is not part of the house, state is, the state has told us what their criteria is and we adopted that as we, so most of the comp I guess is ever system like and exists. But I want to. One, one send, comp plan.
I love that comp plan is used for, for funding. And for, you know, if it's in the comp plan, it has more teeth when you're looking for money than if it's never discussed in a plan and now you want to do it, but it's only discussed in a, so.
Money, they will, it'll be on plan somewhere.
Well, this is under number three. Yes, there was a meeting. I mean, I had this, and I think Joe, Joe was here for the last time there was some significant discussion on the comp plan. And, uh, from what I understand, there's a lot of discussion on grammatical stuff. In order to not get bogged down as a board, how do we want to, how do we want to pursue those issues? Do we want to jack them up with drafts and reveal them independently and make suggestions? Or do we want to task several people with going through and making those changes?
What we're just talking about. Might have to start? I think that you should appoint a subcommittee to go through and, to bring that back to the plan.
Good point, Ty. Teachers that give it there.
How many of the processes for, for subcommittee, are you all interested in, in doing that for the board?
Do it, bid as a chair of this.
I, I remember time that should be after the, the board agrees that the need of the subject has been, you know, presented as a point, but.
So maybe we can do that whole section at a time, we kind of shoot through the first two sections, we kind of hand that off, but.
Oh, okay.
So that way you don't have a whole thing to look at all the time, just shoot through over a few lines.
Well, one of the things I think Dan I talked about was not only grammatic grammar, but, um, and things like that, she's much better at that, but formatting too. I mean, I think each section has obviously formatted the same sort of at one glance, so we'll have to talk about that a little bit.
The formatting thing now, I don't know how, matter of fact, that, that, put that together, it started all off first time, so that's, that, it didn't mean format.
I don't think I remember what time, but that was first two sections, there was a difference in formatting and the same kind of thing at one point, and that was, that was the point I made then, that it doesn't matter how it is in particular, it just needs to be the same. I can't remember exactly what it was, but.
So I kind of see the question, I think that now is currently Microsoft publisher file. But is, and there's no way you can convert that to a Word file or something that's easier to.
There's a document that we're supposed, that we're looking at this cycle, twenty-six June that is so important.
This is about, uh, when we're, when they say that, pardon, that's not a whole document or.
Is there something?
Yeah, that would make me, we're going through a lot of line and changing notes and tips and consulting and where it's been. Get that a long time, get that committed to it, they would run it out there and to just knock it out, little stuff, then bring it back and then we go back to call it.
So do we need to make a motion to set up a subcommittee, Jack, or how does that work? I mean, you have to bring it in for them.
Yeah.
A few girls are, are just doing it. Concerning on board.
Which we discussed, right?
I listened a lot to that.
Yes, and then you guys will get Jack, because Jack has all the files. Jack, there are both this, these presentations.
I just want to comment before you enter there.
Sure.
Mr. Jenkins gave his powerful presentation on EDC and he gave us a copy there. We would have planned to write a copy there.
I know, what is, is that?
This, this is a presentation.
And it goes with the comprehensive point?
Uh, not exactly, but planning need was along there.
Do we have a possible?
No, well, my question is, um, the original committee on economic development, are they gonna just use what Tommy's brought to us and that's gonna be the form that it's supposed to be?
No, Tommy was supposed to, and he hasn't yet, he was going to, uh.
Put it in the form.
He was going to work on, on that portion.
Okay, got you.
I'm not saying that yet. I sent an email, I spoke to him, I'm sure we got the habit.
Yeah.
Or that, but he gave us, while he presented his powerful presentation, that's what I wanted.
Oh, I don't know, if he's gonna do that other thing, then I would want to.
I think the original EDC was Justin and was Marwes?
Yeah, it was me and one of them from Holland and then they left, one of us.
Of Darren Taylor?
Yeah, Taylor, and then he left and then they reported everybody, so it was me.
I was gonna say, if all you have is the presentation, would you show us all the summarize that? Have you seen, you'll get anything from Tommy?
Yeah, very.
Okay, I would like to say this, because I want to hear it here.
Well, I, I recently had to, I didn't, I wanted, um, uh, because, I mean, I, uh, what, what these big options are, that you, the planning say on the front page of the this, uh, it's a feasibility study by D O T. This is for enterprise purposes, you know, to turn the world with, it's just letting you know what's coming up in the world transportation plan. I just wanted to get this out a few months ago, we got this one, so this is, this is the same one. This is the, uh, the results of the feasibility study from, sorry, from twenty-four, two sixty-four. The results of our study, they have some recommendations in there, what I would like to point out here, you can discuss it, if you have questions, I'll, I'll answer. But the reasons for it is, need to, to get to page four. Explain this a little bit. The L S is level service for A M B and the peak hour. The D O P rates, uh, the, the level service, A D C, E D F, this is the level service, if you look under the table one, under two thousand thirteen, and you look to the right of that you see on the state level, Adam Bridge to the French Road, it gets a C. A in the best and F in worst. The entrance of shopping center, solid road, it's a C. Frank and Plaza on sixty-four, all around, it's a, mm, do that. Now, projection transportation increase by twenty forty, if they do nothing, see how the, uh, the, the, the forty slices, A M R, high slices, D N R. So if you see on the state code eleven twenty-two, oh, it's a C in the morning, D in the afternoon. Entrance of shopping center, solid road, it's a D in the morning, C in the afternoon. And the, uh, Frank and Plaza goes to three, yeah, which is a bad commitment. So we got some serious problems that are, that's where we're going to do this. And the twenty forty level service, they give you their projection, or if they deal with, and you can see it's still operated to C and D in most instances with Adam Bridge and French Road and best A P and C. So anyway, these, there will be some government meetings this fall, keep your ears to that, I'll, I'll get that information out to you guys, that, uh, there's government meetings to end up on different alternatives, different methods, whether they want, you know, you want a grassy being, want a concrete being, whether you want to turn it over, turn around walls, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, that's all would be considered.
Will Jack, but there's nearly more sign, is that running in touch here?
Yes. And this is actually done with our commercials already, so what do you want to do that go down? It was a late morning. Yeah, they, they did do, they did their good deal.
Now, if that piece, yes, and that people were at the other night, that fellow said there's a red light down there in the bridge.
That's the, the red light and turning it toward the community building, broadband of the community building, and that would be in my answer. That, that's probably the best option, that's not the.
Is it in here?
So this, this study, sorry, goes all the way to Adam Bridge?
Yes.
Okay, and so about half of that's ETJ and half of that's county?
Yes, yes, and.
ETJ all the way to, half the comp?
Yeah.
To have, I mean, half the comp, almost twenty-five.
Very close, and I said, a lot of this.
Does this have a, like?
Just a little check for my verse. Uh, that's been found, uh, on this other document, Shields, it talks about it just a little bit, and I'll just highlight this one. This is not the whole twenty sixteen, uh, tip. That is a state transportation improvement project, so the ones that typically are funded. And if you look the third one down, I apologize for being a idiot, I highlighted, I talked and you made a copy of the other. Okay, but anyway, the third one down, R fifty-seven thirty-four, is U S sixty-four to wide horizon. And if you look to the right, some of the comments, they've accelerated that project. The byway acquisition has been accelerated from twenty nineteen to twenty seventeen, construction is accelerated from twenty twenty-one to twenty twenty-two. So, you think, well, this project's a long, there's a lot to do to be able to grow that big, with that investment, some of that people have distracted, there's a lot to offer. It takes a long time, we have to do feasibility study, they have to do a power study, they have to do impact of any archives or archaeological events, centuries, underground storage tanks, streams, you name it, all that to be considered, then the byways have to be repaired or over by the people, and then they have to leave it out, and they have to work, that's all. Turn around over if you would.
So this is from, I'm sorry, Jack, U S sixty-four to wide horizon?
Yes.
That's from basically, over here, over here to Zachings?
Yes, that's, 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 that's kind of it. The rest of the way, not so much. Now, and the final method that they're gonna do, that how you want to construct this, the C L F narrative, and that will be at the public meetings, which I hope this will go to, just in here, but look all this out. In the past years, the D O P's not giving anybody an opportunity, it has, I saw Kathy at the real estate conference. It's an opportunity to know and to learn and to understand how this works and to get them to essential. There's a grading system, the way, the way I'll give the click notes first and how this works, the D O T season, if you'll see something, you'll see one of those government things that busts right there, then they're gonna do it for an accident count, then they'll do it for the topic count, then they'll see a need, then they'll come to, uh, transportation, D C C, especially our whole problem, and they'll discuss, is the county actually doing something here? Do you have it on plan? And it gets graded by the county and the towns wants and needs, and you really want this, do you need this? Uh, so how are we gonna evaluate this on your project? Typically, we get to, the county gets, there are three projects a year, and what, these are our favorites, and they're graded by the county, and they're given to the district, they're graded, we go to the state, and if it wins the award, then it gets, we get it to the player, but you have to want. And part of the grading system is about to be, but, please drop the pen, this, and just quickly now, on the next page, about halfway down to the, under the rural projects. On the page, on the, on the next page, it's ten dots. Yeah, you see the rural projects, uh, that's, this is just, uh, the same thing, if you can read some of that number, it will give you the years that will spend having those money, and those are typically thousands of dollars, you know, thousands of dollars, I think the note says. Anyway, this in itself can be a very complicated process, I just, I'm gonna do the old thing, I'm gonna dig the back, just give you a bit of show, and I'll be keeping you all updated. On fourteen twenty-seven, next page's over. The top two, these are in Justin's jurisdiction, but we all, our Franklin system as well, for Lake County urban project, the, the top one, U S four forty-one business, this is twenty-three sixty-four, U S four forty-four street, your six improvements along the street, Main Street, Fourth Street, Main Street, Franklin. And it looks to me like that's gonna be something that'll be twenty, twenty better destiny on it, it is, is that it's relative to twenty twenty. Production in twenty twenty-two. And that's upgrades, intersections of Walmack and Georgian Road and their Maple Street, where George Road and Y come together, Changin Chamber right there, Maple, and then there is Chamber, and also the Deep Street, and then one, four intersections.
I think there's a little brown balance that the commissioner was asking about.
Okay, they could be all, they all could be roundabouts, they could be turn lanes, they could be, I mean, they could be widened, no way of knowing yet, because they're not, it's still so far off, it's still.
Page, page one's mine, if you have any of those. Where, where's that?
That's the third page here. Third page, first one.
First one, the project?
Yeah, the top two.
And, uh, Fourth Street.
Yeah. Anyway, that's all I can say right there.
Let me ask you about, on fourteen twenty-six, the bottom page, uh, that's the page number, that, that, you, hasn't it not really been done? Number two, is that a turnaround?
Yes, some of it's.
Okay, I did nothing, I'll put another.
This is the twenty fifteen document. And the reason that I, I mean, it's out the front page, I'm reading part of that, that's changed.
Carlos on Cat Creek Road, replaced bridge number, over red degree, on fourteen twenty-seven. Next to the bottom, since makes a cat creek road place.
They've got, that's, the bridge replacements are separate, separate projects. It's, uh, it's by a D, we don't have to replace that. They, they, they check for the safety of the bridge, the, the traffic carrying capacity of it, and they make their own decision on who replaces the bridge.
Which one is it? Says Cat Creek Road, replaced bridge number sixty-seven forty-seven, right, except for red degree. It's either the bridge there at Jim Walder's, we turned left, both the building, the horse bridge, right that there, just forward road. Well, I would could go down that Fred Dalton road too, because that was Jack.
I'm pretty sure Carlos is the first one. I'm pretty sure it's the first one you said, where you turn left to go to the twenty springs, you go there.
They have a tag on the bridges and the number. But they have a lot of bridge projects on, man, you know.
We got a lot of old bridges. Town bridge is a good example of that.
The building circle bridge. Want to play a lot of discussion on it, it's not scheduled to be, it's scheduled to be replaced, but not for twenty twenty, around the same time that a good interruption happens there, so.
But the, there are changes from the town Franklin that seven forty, that I can count as well. There's a TAC meeting at the end of this month, or next.
Well, it's usually like the week after our meeting.
Well, ours is the last Monday of this month. But anyway, I talked to the other office, they, I put in the fire, the bridge site, and she wanted me to back them up. And we're able to start the discussion about what counts.
Does that really cost?
Oh, because she didn't know that. Is that a region A or is that a Mayan county? It's four Mayan county, but it's region A. The DAC is all region A, so our budget's all considered.
You still have one, the back three, the bigger.
I guess it's what they did at home.
It's going to be.
August.
September. Four o'clock. Our resource center.